Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome all of you to our April 8th City Council meeting. We welcome you here, and then in the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is given the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. If you desire to be recognized by the chair, please fill out a request form and present it to the city clerk president here in council chambers. Each speaker shall be allotted three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council. Groups shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. We thank you for participating in your city government. We ask that you please silence all electronic devices at this time. With that, I call this council meeting to order. If you would, please stand for our invocation. I'd like to thank Pastor David Knight from Christ Our Savior Fellowship for leading us in our invocation. If you will, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag following the invocation.
Thank you. Our Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening with a grateful heart. We thank you for the day you gave us today. Thank you for all the blessings that you showered upon us. And now, Lord, I ask your blessing on the members of this council. Bless their deliberation and discussion on the issues affecting our city. We pray that you give them wisdom, direction, and guidance. We ask this in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. It's in His name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Knight.
Is this Joe Mian pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Blackwell?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Trace. Councilmember Matheny?
Here.
Councilmember Cooper?
Here.
Councilmember Askew?
There are no presentations at this time, which brings us to our citizens forum. Any person who desires to comment on any item not on this agenda is provided this opportunity to address the city council. Each person is requested to complete a sign-in form to be provided to the presiding officer prior to or as soon as is practical thereafter the person addresses the council. When you come forward, we ask that you please state your name and address for the record, and we ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. We have James, is it Mole or Mook? I can't quite make out your writing on the last name. Forgive me, I apologize. If you'll come up and straighten me out on that, James, I appreciate it.
Hello, council. This is James Moore, M-O-O-R-E.
Okay.
And the address is 3855 San Isidro Circle, S-A-N-I-S-I-D-R-O Circle in St. Cloud. So I came tonight to ask for some help in a matter that has been brought to my attention recently. So we moved to St. Cloud back in, I guess, March of 2018, and shortly thereafter put up a fence. Initially, put up a six-foot fence and put a pool in our yard. After we put the pool up, within like the first week that we put the pool up, we had kids jump the fence and were playing inside our pool, a group of teenagers. We saw our neighbor down the road put an eight-foot fence up. We asked our HOA for approval. They gave us approval. Our fence company submitted paperwork, did the work, put the eight-foot fence up. On September 14th of 2018, I got the final approval sign-off from Claire Manny. And then about a week and a half ago, code inspectors came out and revoked my permit saying that it did not have the proper, didn't follow the proper city code. So I started doing my research on it, and during that time, doing my research, a lot of stuff keeps changing inside the permit. So I go online and look at the permits. Dates are changing, information is being added. I don't know who's going in and making changes to my permits or my information, but I don't know why they have an issue with my permit or why they're going in and changing my information. I'm doing the same thing with my neighbor down the road. He couldn't be here tonight, but I'm here to take care of my issues. But I was looking for some help and help to do this. I talked to the code enforcement supervisors. They kind of gave me some paperwork to fill out and go through a process, but I mean, after two and a half years, I don't know why you're coming back and revoking my permit after you approved it two and a half years ago. So not sure what else to add, but just a little annoyed and concerned that they would do this and how that there's, they're making changes to permits and changing information in the system. They're telling me when I go down to the inspector's office that it was disapproved on the first permit. I talked to Terry from the code enforcement last night. She said that she went into the system and saw it was approved. So I don't know who's telling the truth, who's not telling the truth, or why, why there's variations.
We certainly want to help you resolve this issue, Mr. Sturgeon. Is this something you could certainly help this gentleman with?
Yes, sir. We'd be glad to do that. I've been speaking to our code enforcement officers. I believe they have spoken to Mr. Moore. And I have all the details for that, those interactions over the last week, and we're willing to help him resolve this.
Are you getting, are they changing and saying that this is not, not properly done now?
So I was told, we had the permit. Alex Miller came out from code enforcement and said that she's revoked my permit. When I came down and talked to the permit office, they said that the initial permit was never approved. I had the final approval sign-off here, and I also have another bill now for 5150 for another final inspection. You know, so two and a half years later, I'm getting another final inspection. When I talked to them at the office, saying, you know, if it was disapproved two and a half years ago, why wasn't I notified? Like, why are you waiting two and a half years to tell me? Like, why was my fence company informed? And when I went down to talk to them, they have no idea what's going on. Like, as far as we know, everything's been approved, and now, two and a half years later, we're in this situation.
I can certainly understand your frustration, but we've been assured that the city manager will get with you and resolve this issue. He's always been really good about doing that.
Mr. Mayor, not done quite yet. Dan, I have a question. Once, once they give a final permit on this one, three years ago?
Well, from what I have--
How do you, how do you go back and change it, or you're, and you're making, and you're pulling and saying it's no good, three years down the road? You can't do that. This is city, this is city paperwork that has been changed. And if it's been changed, there's somebody that's liable that's been doing something wrong.
Hang on a second, Mr. Cooper.
Mr. Cooper, would you like me to answer any of your questions, please?
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, first of all, I do not believe the paperwork has been changed. What we understand happened here was that, as this gentleman just stated, he received a permit. He received a permit for a six-foot fence. He did not build the six-foot fence. He built, he ended up building an eight-foot fence, which is against the city code. So the permit he received and the permit that everybody is waving around is for a six-foot fence, because that's the only fence that's permitted under the city code. So they couldn't give him a fence permit for the permit, for the fence that he has, as he has apparently an eight-foot fence on his property, as does the other neighbor in that same subdivision. So that came to the attention of code enforcement. It's against the city code. The permit was flagged because the fence that was built was not in accordance with the permit that was approved two and a half years ago.
But this--
And that's, that's the issue that has arisen. There is an option for him to address to get a variance to build an eight-foot fence if he'd like, or to keep his existing fence, to reduce the height of his existing fence to six-foot. And those are the two options available to him. And that's what city staff has explained to him, where he could go get a variance or try to get a variance for an eight-foot fence. I do not believe the paperwork has been changed.
Okay. But I look at this piece of paper here, and it says fence is final, and it's on the 2018, and it's already been signed. How can you go three years down the road and you're going to change it in the last week? You can't do that.
I don't know what, I don't want to happen--
If I could jump in here--
There's something wrong here.
Actually, actually, you're incorrect, Mr. Cooper. First off, the building official, who's a state officer, revoked the permit because it doesn't meet the land development code. Okay, the state, he's a state officer, okay? I have no authority over him.
But you said it was okay for three years.
Because the code enforcement flagged it when they noticed it was over the height. That's what happened. I still think we can resolve this. There's a process, the due process is for the Board of Adjustments to make a determination.
I understand what you're saying, and I understand what, what the process, what you're saying. But Bill, if you've, if you've already looked at it three years ago, and they made an inspection, I assume they did because it's signed here three years ago, and said it's okay, it's a final done, done. You can't go back and, okay, some builder's going to build a house, and you get halfway done, or you get completely finished and say, wait a minute, you can't do this because we already gave a final, but we're going to go change it. You can't do that.
And I guess, Mr. Cooper, the piece of information we are missing tonight, and we certainly can look into this, is when did the original six-foot fence become an eight-foot fence? If the six-foot fence became an eight-foot fence after that 2018 date, then there is absolutely no way the city would have been aware of that until code enforcement happened. This fence was, the height of this fence was extended beyond the original approved permit, and that's the issue that has arisen. And it's, and we understand the reasoning why, apparently, this, the homeowner felt this had to be done, but your city code limits fences to six feet in height, and that's where it is. So the key missing piece, my view, just generally speaking, is when did the six-foot fence become the eight-foot fence in relation to when the city staff looked at the fence? And if it happened after 2000, September of 2018, there isn't anything the city staff could have done about that.
Do you know when you did that?
I don't have the exact dates. And when I reached out to the builder, L, I don't know how to pronounce it, L-A-S-R-A-Y down here on 192, they said they sent all the information to the city. And then when I went down to the office, asked them to pull the information, they said that anything from 2019 back isn't available. So now, nobody can find the records.
No, that's not, that's not true.
No, we'll, we'll look for that.
That's what they told me at the office.
Okay. Thank you for letting me know that. But Mr. Moore, we'll work with you. We'll get this resolved, as always, absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
We'll get it resolved. Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Are you through, Mr. Cooper?
I am done.
Thank you. We have Dolly Clements.
Good evening, everybody. I hope you can hear me through the mask.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm here today because I'm talking on the historic tax exemption. When I got here in 2006, I bought a historic building. I was told at that time that I would be able to get a historic tax exemption, which waives about 100% of my ad valorem taxes on my building. On 12/31/2020, I submitted over my application for this exemption. I received an email from Anastasia saying, hey, I got your, I got your email. Under your ordinance, you have 30 days to respond whether I get this exemption or not. After 30 days, I received a notice. We're still reviewing it. Okay? All right. Then I get an email. It also says that you had to do this prior to your work being done. 2016, I filed a use of my building to you. 2016, I filed a CRA application, which you knew what I was doing. 2017, I filed a building permit, which was approved by your building department. October 2019, I was asked, I asked the question, hey, am I going to get this historic tax exemption? Ms. Clements, verbatim, email, "The city of St. Cloud has not fully implemented the tax abatement program per the requirement, Section 3.24.9," and it goes on, "So therefore, I cannot approve or disapprove or deny your historic tax exemption." October 2019. 2020 happened. At the end of 2020, 12/31/2020, I filed for my application. I sent that over again on 12, 212, 217, 2021. Hey, any news on my tax exemption? Oh, I find out. I go to the county. I find out we have an ordinance in town, and nobody has taken advantage of it. Nobody has been approved for this ordinance. Okay? I just want to know, is it being reviewed? Am I going to be approved?
Mr. Sturgeon, you have any information for us on this, or is this something you need to address?
I'm going to let Dan address this. It's pretty complicated.
Well, the first and overreaching overall issue is the fact that the ordinance related to historic preservation allowed for, by future action, for the city council to implement a, with the permission of the county, an option for individuals to apply for this tax exemption. That was never, that was, that it was a permissive option under the Historic Preservation Act that was adopted by the city council as part of the ordinance, and that, that option was never enacted and never put in place. So that provision that's referred to, although it is a, it is an option under the state statute, and it is an option under historic preservation, it requires cooperation with the county, it was never implemented by, in your ordinance. So it does not, that is not an available option as we sit here tonight.
Actually, sir, if you take a look at the website, it says it really clearly, right there on your website.
Just, I've looked at the ordinance. I haven't looked at the website.
It's right on--
I don't know what's on the website.
It's right on the website, and it says it right there, historic exemption, tax abatement, right there for 10 years.
Mr. Mayor, could we see that, or could somebody go and research it real quick and find out? That ain't going to take five minutes. I'd like to find out.
I don't think that's a--
Well, we can certainly get you all the information, any information you want on this. We can work with staff and get you everything you want to know.
Okay. You can do that. I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, certainly.
Okay. So can I get an answer within the next seven days?
Mr. Sturgeon?
Yes.
Can you handle that?
Ms. Clements, we'll make sure you get an answer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dolly.
Thanks.
That will be addressed. Would anyone else like to speak during the citizens forum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. My name is Donnie Martinez, and I serve as the President of Osceola County Association of Realtors. I know you're approving at tonight's meeting a proclamation recognizing April as Fair Housing Month, and on behalf of our more than 4,700 members, I would like to thank you. As the largest professional trade association in Osceola County, we are committed to the mission and intent of Congress to provide fair housing for everyone. We are fortunate to have the support of the city commission and appreciate all you do to ensure equality for our citizens. Thank you.
And thank you very much. And we do have a proclamation that has been issued in recognition of the Fair Housing Month. Thank you so much for being here tonight, Mr. Martinez.
Thank you, sir.
With that, we come to our consent agenda. The next portion of tonight's meeting is the consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now is the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if staff or members of the city council wish to speak on a consent item, they have the same opportunity. First of all, are there any items that the council are wishing to address individually on the consent agenda?
C and D. I'd just like to pull it separately, vote on it separately. That's all.
Okay. I have an extra button here by my side. Is that yours?
I'd like to pull C for discussion, as in cat.
Okay. C will be pulled.
And then, in my backup, when I downloaded it, the minutes weren't included. I just want to make sure everyone got a copy of those.
Yes, I did. Did everyone else?
Yeah.
We will look at item number C's interest.
You're just going to pull, pull and vote on this separate, as far as I'm concerned.
Ms. Matheny, you want to address this?
Sure. Um, I don't know whose item, is this Mr. Anderson's item?
Yes.
Could you be able to pull the plat up with the plat notes? Oh, I think he's in the back room.
He's coming. I just asked him to come out.
Don't mean you're in trouble.
She asked for the plat notes to be pulled up.
Yeah.
The plat--
The plat notes. Can you pull it on item--
Old Hickory, Phase 3.
I thought in the PowerPoint.
Which, are you looking for a particular note?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't bring, bring a printout of it. Just had a question on some of the wording on the plat notes. Yeah, that's perfect. So on, on several of these plat notes, it says, anything that had to do with like the stormwater function in the community is to be owned and maintained by Lennar Homes LLC, which I think is, which I think is unusual. What is the plan with, with those, you know, like the wetland buffer tract is to be owned and maintained by Lennar Homes, not the HOA? The wetland tract, the stormwater tract? Is that where it's theirs until it turns to, they've sold 51%, and then it goes to the HOA?
Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. Typically, when we get a plat initially, it's, it is owned by the developer, and then, as you said, after 51%, then they turn it over to the HOA. If we need to change the language, we can clarify that language on the plat.
Okay. I've just never seen that on the, it's usually to the HOA.
I'm sorry, Ms. Matheny, are you looking at--
Um, number eight, number nine. Yeah.
So if you look at that, it includes, including but not limited to a future community development district?
Mm-hmm.
So the intent there is that the community development district that they've created for this particular sub, remember, we went through that with them? The CDD that they're creating will take over the responsibility of that. So it won't be Lennar, it'll be the future community development district.
Okay. And then, the other question I had concern on is comment number 12, note number 12, says the 10-foot utility easement along, well, the 10-foot utility easement along the front of all the lots and tracks abutting the street is hereby granted to the perpetual use of the public? So I just wanted to make sure, like, is the sidewalk in that utility easement? Because that's just strange. I've never seen that kind of note either, that is granted to the perpetual use of the public. Does the city of St. Cloud have utilities that run within that 10-foot utility easement along the front of the lots? And is that a hardship to the city in the future?
I don't know. That sounds like a legal question to me. I don't know, I think it was written on me.
Well--
If I could see it. Mr. Benjers, do you have a--
I don't know, is the applicant here? Maybe they can address that question. They know--
Bobby Johnson with Dewberry Engineering. Our address is 800 North Magnolia Avenue, Orlando, Florida. In regards to the 10-foot, sorry, did you say it was a utility easement, or just--
Yeah, it's comment number 12, note number 12 there. The 10-foot utility easement along the front of all lots and tracks.
Yeah, so that's adjacent to utility easements. There is public utilities for St. Cloud, and then also other public utilities. I'm not quite sure on the legal pertaining of the second part of being to the benefit of the public, but I think that's kind of like a standard comment that we've done on previous plots. Apologize.
Could you speak a little closer to the microphone, sir? That might help, too.
Yeah. Makes it a little bit easier. So it, this is kind of like a standard from what we've done on the previous plats for Old Hickory. We're following along with the same kind of wording that was used before. The intent of that 10-foot utility easement is to provide for the water and other city services that are going through there, along with power, I think, OUC Power, and then other kind of cable providers and such.
So the water lines inside of the community, are they in the right-of-way? Are they in the easement?
They're in the right-of-way, but as, whenever they might need to serve it, sometimes it's very beneficial to have the additional 10 feet adjacent to the right-of-way to, if we ever have to dig up that main.
Okay. And then the sidewalks are within the right-of-way?
I think the, for the, for the subdivision roads, for like the internal streets, yes, they are.
Okay. Okay. Let's up for me.
Have anything else to say while you're up here?
Over approved.
Would anyone else in the auditorium like to speak to this item that we're about to vote on? We have a discussion and our motion by council on item C.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Trace. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Cooper?
No.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
Mr. Cooper, you have pulled item D. Would you like to speak to that item? Or you want a just separate vote on that also? Would anyone in the audience like to speak to item D on the consent agenda? If not, we'll have discussion and our motion from council.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Askew. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, from Councilmember Trace. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
No.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
Thank you. That brings us back to our, to the remaining consent agenda. Would anyone like to speak to the consent agenda? We'll have discussion and our motion by council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Askew, a second from Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on all items except for C and D, which have already been approved?
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
That brings us to public hearings. Item number one. Madam Clerk, will you please read it?
Public hearing for Resolution Number 2021-036R. A resolution of the city council, the city of St. Cloud, Florida, granting a conditional use to operate a gasoline sales in conjunction with a convenience store used on a 1.121-acre property known as Parcel K, located east of the Florida Turnpike, west of Okonkuk Road, and Lexington Boulevard, St. Cloud, Florida, and describing the body of this resolution.
Mr. Anderson?
Good evening. Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. This is a request for Parcel K within Anthem Park for a conditional use. Oh, you're doing that. Okay, so this item, as I said, is for conditional use for Parcel K within Anthem Park. It was originally approved and allowed for commercial on Track K within the project, and it allowed for uses that are permitted within neighborhood business, and includes all uses within neighborhood business zoning district. And this map right here shows the location of Track K at the entrance to the Anthem Park subdivision. By way of background, as I said, this is a planning development. Land use is medium-desi residential. It was approved back in 2000, the PUD ordinance was approved back in 2004, and it permits the use of gasoline sales in conjunction with a convenience store, and this has to be done as a, as a conditional-- this has to be done as a, as a conditional use and not as a use of right. It is compatible with the general development in the area, and at this time, there's no adverse impacts to facilities and services. Just by way of further explanation, this project went before the Planning Commission, and they denied the request citing several issues with respect to traffic, gasoline sales at, at that site, the fact that there would be alcohol, and I think the, the owner of the daycare facility across the street also came in opposition to the request and cited concerns of, regarding value of their property and this use being less undesirable at that site. This plan, if it's approved, would be consistent with our economic development strategic goal and our growth management goal of our strategic plan. As I said, staff recommends approval of ordinance 2021-036R. And again, the Planning Commission at their meeting recommended denial by a vote of five to zero, and asked that the City Council consider this for approval.
Is the applicant here?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. For the record, my name is Xavier Gregoitia, address 6816 Hanging Moss Road, Orlando, Florida. I just want to say, we concur with staff's recommendation for approval. Also, wanted to state that we did not have an opportunity to meet with, with the council members individually to discuss some of the issues that came up at the Planning Commission like staff mentioned, so with your permission, if I could, address some of those concerns now, some of those questions.
Go ahead.
So, as staff mentioned, this, the reason that we're before you today for this conditional use is for the addition of the gas pumps at a convenience store. Per the approved PD for Anthem Park, neighborhood business uses are permitted, and those include the convenience store without the gas pumps, restaurants, as well as tobacco shops. It also goes on to state that within, within this district, conditional uses listed under neighborhood business can be, can be approved, such as convenience store with the gas pumps. One other issue that came up with regards to alcohol sales, per Florida statutes 2020, chapter 5, 562.45, the beverage law. The location of, for on-premises consumption of alcohol may not be located within 500 feet of the property that comprises a public school or a private school. So again, that particular statute has to do with onsite consumption. This convenience store obviously is not going to, is not going, going to be allowing on-premises consumption that would be selling to the general public to take and be consumed off property. And lastly, also wanted to talk a little bit about the appearance of the gas station and what that would look like. The applicant is currently working on some creative ideas to try to make the, make the gas station more compatible with the surrounding area, and, and that will be presented, should this be able to move forward to the next, the next process for approval. With that, I just wanted to thank you and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Does the council have any questions you'd like to ask the applicant at this point?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. Askew.
I'm pretty familiar with this area. That road that you're trying to put that on, that is also the, the road that they stack on a, an elementary school, is that correct?
Yes, it is. It's, it's across the street from the school, if I'm not mistaken, yes.
Have you ever, I mean, before you build this thing, or if you get approved, have you ever seen that twice a day?
No, I have not.
Okay, you might want to look at that.
We still, we still have to do a traffic study as well.
Sure.
It was not required at this stage of approval, but that will be in the next step. Should we, should we be approved to go to the next step, then that would require a traffic study to look at.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, sir. You'll hang around, we may need some more questions. We, we have a number of people wanting to speak to this item. Brian Dundas. Can I pronounce that correctly?
Yes, am I allowed to remove my mask?
Yes, sir, you may remove your mask at the, at the podium.
Thank you for having me, Mayor and Council. My name is Brian Dundas, B-R-I-A-N-D-U-N-D-A-S. I am the owner of Creative World School on Lexington Boulevard, 4500 Lexington Boulevard, and also a resident of St. Cloud, 1425 Hidden Oaks Bend. And I'd just like to speak to the gas station and convenience store and submit something from the original Planning Commission meetings to the council here, from the April 22nd, 2004 archives from the city. It clearly states, in the commercial pods, "There must be a permitted uses list and conditional uses list, using neighborhood business requirements may be a good starting point. A list of prohibited uses is also available, is also advisable to prevent any confusion. Staff will not support uses not in harmony with a residential community." So, where is, I've never seen a gas station be, you know, how is that within harmony of a residential community? When I came to the council five years ago for my approval to buy a piece of property from D.R. Horton, the same person who's selling this, their vision of the business commercial was a professional-type establishment located at the front of Anthem Park. Be it, you know, we got the conditional use for a childcare, but they were also looking for professional dentist office, commercial buildings with, you know, professional, that type of atmosphere for the development. Now, I know this was approved 17 years ago, and things have changed, and building code things, building codes have changed, but the community of Anthem Park has been there for, you know, 15 years, and they have done very well without a convenience store, without a gas station. All of those conveniences are less than a half a mile away, right up the street. The piece of property itself is not conducive to that type of store. There's only one curb cut for entrance and exit to Lexington Boulevard. The, if they were to put another curb cut in, that would fall on a, on a curving road, and the traffic, like Dave Askew said, is horrendous twice a day in the morning. It backs up all the way to Old Canoe Creek and almost down to Neptune Road. So I think the traffic issues would be a major problem for that location for this business. Thank you very much, and would you like for me to submit the?
Give that to the clerk there, please. Thank you.
Claudia Dundas.
I'm going to leave my mask on, if you can hear me okay? Okay.
Yeah, just be close to the mic, please.
Thank you, yes. My name is Claudia Dundas, D-U-N-D-A-S. I reside at 1425 Hidden Oaks Bend, and I am the co-owner with my husband Brian of the Creative World School here in St. Cloud. I've brought with me today a couple of things, and I can certainly present that to, I've got a clerk over here. One of the things that I did want to bring to the attention, as my husband did, to speak about, the traffic congestion, it would be enormous. We leave the school to drop off the kids at 7:40 in the morning. I get to the school at about 8 o'clock, and I don't get back to the school until about 8:10. But the traffic at that point in time is all the way back to my school, from Neptune Elementary, all the way back. And that is at least a mile. I could be wrong, but I believe it's a little over a mile. The traffic does back up, especially between 7:30 a.m. and 2:45, and 2:45 to 3:30 p.m., Monday through Friday, and it's just, it's just awful. The other concern that I have as the owner of the school, I know that it was spoke of previously about alcohol sales and tobacco sales with a convenience store and/or gas station. It does bring in, you know, people purchasing those things. I don't think any of us on this planet could promise that no one would open the can out in the, in the parking lot. That just doesn't, that's not realistic. The gas station and/or its convenience store would also bring in a potential crime. If I could ask, can you go back to one slide where, and I want to be able to tell them exactly where our school is located, in case you're not? So, you, oh, there you go. So track K is where the convenience store wants to go. We're just absolutely on the other side of the street. So we are definitely within 500 feet from entryway to entryway of our parking lot. I'm sure that if the owners of the piece that is just on the Old Canoe Creek side were here this evening, he wouldn't be pleased with the, the possibility of a gas station or alcohol sales, tobacco sales, alcohol. Community character, my husband spoke to that. We don't believe a gas station is appropriate for this area. Health effects, I have 125 children in my school. I don't know what the future brings from that, for them, in any way, case, or form, but I can say that I'm worried about the benzene, the ethanol benzene, and all of the things that, components of gasoline. We're worried about the noise. Children do take naps, of course. We're worried about the pedestrian traffic for the kids that actually go to Neptune Elementary. We know they have to walk back there. Is there going to be a crossing guard at that gas station? We're worried about blighting. We're worried about sexual predators and offenders visiting the location, and I have a copy of 140 signatures petition.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Harold Ellens, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that is correct, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you, council members.
Could you state your address, please?
My name, Harold Ellens, address 1841 Remembrance Avenue. We have four gas stations, as was alluded, within between a half mile to a mile and a half from our location. So in terms of access to gasoline, that's not an issue, I don't believe. I've got five, access of gasoline. The traffic congestion, we already spoke of that. Safety. What wasn't raised was potential risk to, she talked about risk and exposure to, to gases and vapors. I think there's also a risk to leakage into this, into the permafro, well, it's not permafrost here, but into the.
We wish sometimes.
Water table?
Into the water table, yes, sir. And potentially, if you've got a tank that's 20,000 gallons full of gasoline, if that catches fire, that's not just a backyard barbecue, that's a potential bomb. In terms of crime, vagrancy, loitering, littering, and we do also believe that it is not conducive to property value. Everywhere there, you can look up on a lot of different places, that any places that are within a half a mile of a gas station within the community, well, not within the community, within a half a mile, the prices are depressed on homes, and the further you get away from that, the more you can sell for it. Again, I thank you for your time. I do have an additional 236 signatures from the community and homeowners who are absentee owners who agree that we should not have this.
Thank you, if you'll give that to the clerk there. Thank you very much, Mr. Ellens. John Ortega?
Good evening, Mayor and Board. My name is John Ortega. I live on Anthem Park, 4850 Ogloy Way, St. Cloud, Florida, 34769. And nice to meet you guys, the board. I concur to all the discussion that they have mentioned before me, and I concur to the excessive, the excessive traffic due to the schools, the, the elementary school there. A major problem for there in the traffic is when, when, when they, when they drop their children at school on the way out, they be speeding, making our traffic, our local traffic very hard to maneuver, you know? And then if we got another gas station there, it's going to be worse, because they're going to have also people coming in out of the gas station. And they, people are in a rush, the line is long, these two kind of, there is the daycare, there is the school, and then also there is children that walk back and forward to their homes or to wherever they get picked up. They walk across the front lot K. And I don't have much to say over whatever they have say, other than that area before they convert it into a business area. It was a conservation area. I think it was an ego conservation area. And, you know, we still hope that those conservations areas come back up. And worry about the leakage and, and the leakage and, and any contamination they can bring to that area right there, that is already overbuilt. Car wash and gas stations and stuff like that. That's all I got to say, thank you. And I'm talking for about 20 other people, signatures.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ortega. William Clark.
Hello, my name is William Clark. I live at 4730 Nathan Hale Boulevard in Anthem Park. Again, I agree with the owners of the, the daycare center and my other neighbors who also agree that putting a gas station there is a bad idea. The excessive traffic, the danger to both the neighbors and the children at that school. My son is going to be attending that school very shortly, and it is something that I worry about. The owner who wants to put the gas station there, when asked if he knows about the school, he said, yes, I know about the school across the street. Maybe he doesn't realize, there are two schools in our neighborhood. You have Neptune Elementary and the daycare center. So it just, it, it's a bad idea to put the gas station there, so I would urge you guys to vote against it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Jill Elginus? Hello, Jill.
I live at 4740 Pine Lake Drive, and from my window, I see their school. I'm right on the corner. Traffic is so bad, I can't pull out of my street, and I can't even pull out of my driveway sometimes, because we're backed up on Pine Lake Drive. And this would increase it, and one other thing is, behind our house, there's, we have a fence, and then old people home-built a fence, and we have found beer cans, tons of them back there. So we took it upon ourselves and blocked it off with wood, because I don't know if they're back there all the time, but it solved the problem. There's no more beer cans back there, but, so that, again, alcohol and the traffic, and I don't want to see a big Exxon sign from my window, okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Elginus. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this item that has something new to add?
My name is Anthony Carrasco. I am a resident of Anthem Park at 1830 Soldiers Pass. My only concern with the convenience store gas station is the success of it, you know, if it doesn't work out, you know, how, how is it going to look as, coming into the entrance of the community, where, you know, boarded, boarded up windows, empty gas tanks in the ground, you know? I pay, we pay, we all pay into a CDD and a HOA to help maintain our property value, and, you know, I'm just concerned about if, if it doesn't work out, you know, how does that affect us when we're paying into it to?
Thank you. Could you fill out a?
Sure.
I'll slip there before you're seated, please. Is there anyone else? If not, we will have discussion and/or motion by council. Mr. Cooper, your light is on.
I'd make a motion, I deny this. Not having a gas station there.
We have a motion for denial.
I'll second it.
All right. I want to have some discussion first.
Thank you.
And we have a second, a motion from Councilmember Cooper for denial, and a second from Councilmember Matheny. Before we vote on that, is there any discussion or input from the council? Mr. Benzer, do you have anything?
Yes, and, and as was pointed out in the staff application, and is in your
Yes, and, and as was pointed out in the staff application, it is in your packet, a conditional use permit involves essentially six essential factors that have to be determined to either be favorable or decided in the affirmative by the city council or not. So if you are moving forward with a denial, then we would, for purposes of basically having to be able for the denial to sustain a challenge, if there is a challenge, those, we would ask that you identify the six factors which you do not think have been met, any of the six factors. You can see them on page 58 of your packets, or I can read them to you, whichever one you like.
You'll need to read those, please.
Okay, so the six factors that would have to be determined, and the way the code reads is those six factual matters have to be determined in the affirmative, and if any of the six aren't met, then the city council should deny a conditional use permit application. And they are consist, that the application is consistent with the general pattern of land development within the zoning district. Number two, it is, the conditional use consistent is consistent with the trends of development in the area or neighborhood as opposed to being detrimental to the area or neighborhood. The third, the conditional use is consistent with the patterns of development intensity in the area or neighborhood. The fourth is the conditional use has a reasonable effect on, a reasonable effect on existing traffic patterns, movements, and intensities without adverse impacts. The fifth is the conditional use is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. And the sixth is the conditional use development can be designed to function effectively for its intended purpose without creating negative off-site impacts for adjoining parcels. Based on the discussion, if I may help you, based on the discussion that you've had to date and the questions that were asked specifically by Mr. Askew and others, we would think that the, the, the application does not meet, would arguably does not meet items number two, which is that the conditional use is consistent with the trends of development in the area as opposed to being detrimental to the area, that the, also that it is not consistent, it does not meet the requirement of the conditional, conditional use being consistent with the patterns of development intensity in the area, and probably most significantly that the conditional use does, has a, does not have a reasonable effect on existing traffic patterns, movements, and intensities in the area. And finally, number six would also be, would be that it can't be designed to function effectively for its intended purpose without creating negative off-site impacts for adjoining parcels. So we, so with that, all that being said, if it's okay with the motion maker, and then with the second, we would, based on the discussion and agreement of the council, it looks like it does not meet the requirements of numbers two, three, four, and six of your land development code.
Are there any questions or discussion from council?
So we'd ask that that would be incorporated in the motion. If you agree.
Yes.
If you don't agree, then the.
I think, I think we all agree with that. Any opposition to that?
Well, it's their motion.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
And the motion?
It was denied.
Is denied. Thank you all very much. If you please, if you're going to leave, please do your talking outside. Thank you. The next portion of tonight's meeting is council action.
Discussion and possible action regarding appointments and vacancies on the Planning Commission and Historic Preservation Board.
Ms. Jorski?
Before you, you have two sheets. We put for you, the Planning Commission has a vacancy in alternate number two. That's an at-large position. And we have all the applicants listed that had applied during our recruitment, and we noted which ones have been selected for different categories in committee, so we do have quite a few that are, that are open for this board.
Councilmember Matheny?
Hi, I only have the historic paper.
Yes, I'm going to run that.
Do I have historic? They should be together, I'm sorry.
You know what, I'm sorry, I thought it was.
All right. They're mixed up, sorry. This also was in your backup in your packet.
So let's look at the Planning Commission first when you get that.
So we, the other board we have is a Historic Preservation Board, and seat two is a vacant seat, and that is an at-large appointment also.
So would you please say again, seat two on the Planning Commission?
Seat two on the, I'm sorry, alternate number two on the Planning Commission is vacant, and that's an at-large appointment.
Okay, and that's the only vacancy that we're looking at on?
Right.
The plan, let's deal with that one first, please. Do we have any recommendations from the council?
I would request to reappoint Mr. Jeffrey Rivera. I think he does a fantastic job.
Second?
We have a motion for the reappointment of Jeffrey Rivera. Would he go to that alternate two position now?
Yes.
Do we have any other nominations? Do I need to have a roll call vote on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Jeffrey Rivera has been reappointed to the second alternate position. Brings us to the Historic Preservation Board.
Right, we have seat number two, which is a vacancy for at-large position.
And is that the only vacancy there?
Yes, we had a resignation on that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Thomas Lord.
Thomas Lord.
I would like to nominate Michaela Goetz.
Michaela? And I just want to kind of appoint a clarification. Do we want to move one of the alternates into a permanent spot and then fill an alternate spot if they've been serving for a while as an alternate?
Got to pick one, man.
Who are the two alternates again? Could you clarify that?
Yes, we have Jeffrey Gerstenlauer and Catherine Day.
Catherine is a new appointment, is she not?
Yes, you'll see that we did have some appointments to expire. The ones that, right, we did, you'll see on the expiration of terms, the ones that are 2024 are re-disappointed.
So the suggestion was that Jeffrey Gerstenlauer, since he's already been serving, they have been moved up? Is that what you're suggesting?
No, I think.
Or one of them.
I'm sorry, when we did the recruitment and we did the reappointment, some of these were moved and put down, some of the alternates were moved up, and then we installed these two alternates new, if I remember right.
Wasn't, Jeffrey was already on there, though, as an alternate, I'm pretty sure.
I thought so.
So would you like to make a motion that we move him up to seat two before we deal with the nominations?
Yeah. Yes, please.
Want to make that a motion, then?
I'd like to motion to appoint Jeffrey, I never know how to pronounce his last name, Gerstenlauer to seat two of the Historic Preservation Board.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other nominations for that seat two, then, if we're, then let's vote on that one, on that recommendation, then, please, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
I'm sorry, what are we voting on?
We're, we're moving Jeffrey Gerstenlauer up to seat two, since he's already been serving and given an opportunity to actively serve in seat two, and then we'll go back to the nominations for the, for the alternate.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one. So that would leave alternate one open.
Okay, we're back. We have two nominations. Are there any other nominations?
Mr. Mayor, you need a second for either one of those nominations.
Sir?
You need a second for either one of those two nominations.
Okay. Do I have a second for Thomas Lord? And it fails for lack of a second. I'll make a second for Michaela Goetz. Do we have any other nominations? Madam Clerk, you call the roll?
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
No.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
Are we done with?
We should be good unless we get another resignation. We're good for now.
All right. My notes are here again. Mr. Menzares, what do you have for us tonight?
I do not have anything, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Mr. City Manager, what do you have for us?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two good news items. First one is the agreement with Osceola County for the Canoe Creek Road widening PD&E is going to the Board of County Commissioners on the 12th, and then it'll become before this council on the 22nd. The second one is we have an agreement, and it's in legal review with Osceola County and our legal counsel for the Canoe Creek, and old, Deer Creek and Canoe Creek traffic light. So that'll be coming before the end of next month also.
Awesome. That's good news.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Anything else?
No, sir.
You want to tell us about how you passed your physical challenge and?
I passed my physical, thank you.
I'm impressed. You did 25 push-ups. Councilmember Trace?
Thank you. So I was looking at the upcoming workshops and coming up on next week, I guess. We have a mobility fee, police fire, rec impact fees, and then we also have procurement process. I think that might have stemmed from my comment about procurement process and things that should be bid and should be bid. I don't know if we need a full workshop on that, or maybe just a simple presentation from staff. I don't know what there is to workshop. We have a policy about it, so I didn't know if that came up based on my comment or not.
It probably came up because I wanted to add that language to the procurement policy when it came up.
Okay. So is it specific code language we're looking at? Policy language?
I would imagine. Are they, is it all together, or is it a separate meeting?
Oh, yeah, it, I think it's together next week. Okay, so if that's what's on the agenda, that's fine.
All right.
And then also, it was brought to my attention last night that I remember probably a year, year and a half ago, we had a discussion about streetlights and kind of those bright LED bulbs that shine out more than down, and I think there were a couple of problem areas that are, that are still problem areas, down 10th Street, down Canoe Creek, out towards Fire's Cove, I think there were a couple of areas. I just wanted those looked into and just seen if they're upholding to the new process or if that was something that their grandfathered in, if they were built before the code change that we had a while back.
Was that regards to, I'm sorry, Mayor?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Did that have to do with dark skies and we were working with those?
Well, I think it was just, there were lights that, I think we had lighting code before all the dark sky stuff, and I think they're just lights that shine out way more than they shine down.
Okay, so more positional than?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's it, thank you.
That's it?
Oh, sorry. And cattle drive was on Monday. It was a good time, a lot of, a lot of people out there, distance, of course. And the Ram National Circuit Finals rodeo is on Friday and Saturday, and that was kind of the kickoff for that, so if you're available, come out, have a good time.
Very good. Councilmember Cooper?
Mr. Surgeon, we still okay on York Avenue?
As far as the sound system, yes, sir, they're beginning installation. They finished their testing. It should be operational by the end of the month. Double check today.
What's the first song that's going to be played?
Yeah.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
It's a miracle.
Now you're telling me?
They were doing testing. Yeah, they were doing testing.
Last week, it was only a couple of days and?
Well, they were doing testing, and they ran into some issues with the Wi-Fi system, and so they've had to adjust those problems, and so they don't want to install the equipment until they had those issues. They got test equipment all over this area, so they said it'd be starting in the next week and a half installation.
And have you heard any more about on 10th Street, getting the mowing, the county?
No, sir. I have not. I'll have to check on that. I haven't heard anything else about it. I'll check with Stephanie. We had reached out to the county.
They don't hear when you ask them?
No, I mean, it's the county. I mean, we'll, we'll check back with them.
I mean, they've got weeds that are eight, 10 inches, you know, way on up there.
We'll check back with the county. Yes, sir.
Okay. What about the painting on the?
There, we're waiting for another quote, and as soon as that quote comes in, we'll get those fences painted as you requested.
Didn't we paint it the last time?
We did, but it's not on our work schedule this year. As you know, the city's growing, I don't have the staff to do it, so I think it's more cost effective to just bid it out, have somebody, a contractor, do it this year.
Okay. Because I know at the ban jail, it definitely needs to be painted right now.
Yes, sir.
It looks terrible.
As soon as we get the quotes, and Stephanie told me it should be in the next several days, we'll get it painted.
Okay. And we're going to either at the, um, out there, he went on trying to say, at the, where they?
Cemetery?
Cemetery, thank you.
Yes, sir, we're going to take care of that also.
I don't want to know about cemetery.
That'll be part of that bid, yes, sir.
It is in the bid?
Yes, sir, we'll take care of that also.
You looked at it, and it's bad enough. I knew it was, the color was just gone, it was faded out, so.
I remember, I think the last time they painted it, right when you guys got on council?
It's been a long time.
It's been four years.
Yeah. Okay. All right. And the next, next week, we're going to go to the lakefront?
Yes, sir, with the FWC to look at the lakefront.
Okay. All right, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cooper. Councilman Askew?
I don't have anything, but I'd like to read this letter sent to me from Raquel Schroder. It's a positive letter. She just writes, "Dave, it goes without saying that the pandemic made everything in life more challenging and created delays. So when a team of people, the city, get the job done quickly ahead of time, with an effort of customer service, I wanted to make sure that it was shared. Please pass on my sincere appreciation to the team members and departments below for going the extra mile. Carrie Smiles of Utilities, Melissa Howell of Code Enforcement, Ricky Slayer of Building Department, Lucy Logo of Building Department, and Claudia Knackers. And we'd just like to thank you, and it's always cool to get a, a nice positive letter." So I'll make sure I've already passed it on to the city manager, so thank you, kudo to those people.
Excellent.
That's it for me.
Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. Mr. Surgeon, can you just give an update to us, like, in the next couple of days, like the status of the crosswalks on Lake Shore? I know several meetings ago, we did the, approved the money to go ahead and do the other four crosswalks, but just provide an update on that.
You got it. Yes, ma'am.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to make the council aware that the Golden Eagle Event Awards Banquet is coming up in the city of St. Cloud. I believe sponsors a table, and all of you are certainly invited. We just need to know ahead of time if you're going to be able to make it, and that is April the 27th at Osceola Heritage Park. Pre-thing starts at six, and then the award presentation starts at seven, and they're recognizing Sam Haught this year from Wild Florida, certainly a deserving recipient. I'd also like to thank our city manager, and especially Nassim and all of his staff for going out and meeting with some of our residents down on Grape Avenue and just really doing an excellent job with our residents, addressing some of their concerns about the repaving needing to be done on that street and that area, and I'm just so appreciative for how they constantly handle things like that. And the residents, they were very pleased with the way that that was handled. Again, I'd like to remind everyone about the water challenge. If you haven't signed the pledge, please do so. Go online and, and let's participate, get everybody that you can to sign up also to do their best to conserve water. Also, been meeting with, had Also, uh, been meeting with, had two meetings thus far with, uh, I guess there'll be the Steering Committee for the Sister City program, and what was real interesting is we asked Anna Hare, I think Mr. Menzares did, uh, to pull up any kind of history that we had, uh, from having connected with a sister city in the past, and it was real interesting, some of the communication that had taken place between, uh, St. Cloud, France, and the mayor there, and there was some dialogue, it was real interesting. Uh, Anna's pretty amazing, she just pulls stuff up, and, uh, it's just a really amazing one she does. But I look forward to seeing, uh, the, the Sister City program continuing to move forward and, uh, finally deciding, you know, where we're gonna land on that. Uh, with that, I think I am done. Brings us to our information, uh, and report sections. Thursday, April the 15th, there'll be a city council workshop at 3:00 PM at City Hall Council Chambers. Thursday, April the 22nd, there'll be a city council meeting at, at 6:30 here at City Hall Council Chambers also. We did issue a proclamation and recognition of Fair Housing Month. We also issued a proclamation and recognition of Water Conservation Month. Two reports are available for your review, the Warrant List, number nine, and the Recreation Advisory Committee Meeting Minutes for February, uh, which were approved. With that, there are no items on our agenda. We are adjourned.